I'm excited that we have the Topo Chico.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Hey, how are you all?
Oh, yeah. I know I started to feel more dominant than I really am, you know?
Got our star members on the front row here.
It's the world support.
Yeah, we're the nerds.
Nobody wants to sit in the middle section, I see. So, did we just take this ourselves? Let's ask him to help us get table afterwards.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We're going to get started. So everybody could please take your seats. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Committee for a Better Atlanta's Candidate Forum hosted here at the Gathering Spot. I'm Thomas Wheatley with Axios Atlanta, and I'm honored to serve as your moderator today. This morning, we'll hear from candidates running for Atlanta City Council Districts one through twelve as they share their visions for the city's future. Thank you to everyone who came out to join us this morning, and to those joining us virtually, we appreciate your tuning in as well. To kick things off, I'd like to welcome Committee for a Better Atlanta's 2025 co-chairs Tiffany Callaway Farrell and Jordan Dawson.
Thank you so much, Thomas, and good morning, everyone, and welcome to the CBA Candidate Forum. I am Tiffany Callaway Farrell, Vice President of Operations for Atlanta Gaslight, and it is our privilege and my personal privilege to serve as CBA co-chair for 2025.
Tiffany, hey, I'm Jordan Dawson. I'm head of External Affairs and also CBA co-chair for 2025. So we are thrilled to welcome all of you here to our City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the Gathering Spot. We want to say a special thanks to Ryan Wilson. I don't know if Ryan's in here. It's not, but we appreciate very much you being a host again. And as many of you know, this 2025 is an election year in the city of Atlanta. In November, we're going to head to the polls to elect a mayor, city council president, city council members, and these positions are officially nonpartisan. So what does this mean for Atlanta's business and civic community? It means stepping up, engaging, staying informed, and evaluating those seeking elected office.
Hey, so thank you for that, Jordan. So a lot of people ask, where did the CBA come from and what does it stand for? So in the 1990s, a group of Atlanta business and community members established CBA to form a united, unified organization dedicated to objectively evaluating and scoring candidates. For almost three decades, CBA has assessed candidates and played a crucial role in informing Atlanta voters. So today, CBA includes more than 25 members from various industries across the city, all working towards one common goal of ensuring that Atlanta remains a thriving city for everyone. Our member organizations can all be found on our website, c b a t l dot org. So all of those member organizations who are on your board, would you please just wave your hand this morning? Thank you all so much. We appreciate your support. Many of our board members are present, as you have seen, and are present with us here in the room as well as those watching online. These individuals will roll up, who will roll up our sleeves and do important work for CBA. And as we say, the pay is not good at all, but the hours are long, so. No, we're not getting paid for this, Jordan.
Hopefully, you've had a chance to visit CBA's website. It's our central hub of information for candidates and for voters, and it has our 2025 policy platform. And later this year, after each candidate has gone through the CBA process, we'll publish those candidate scores. So what is the CBA process? Well, at the beginning of the cycle, CBA develops a policy platform to outline the issues most important to our members. The platform has been published and can be found at c b a atlanta dot org, and those major categories that we score on are strong governance, leadership, and partnerships, inclusive economic growth, safe and thriving neighborhoods, and a sustainable and connected city. Once again, please visit the CBA website to read our comprehensive platform.
Thank you so much, and we've taken a lot of time to make sure that our platform really addresses the needs and the concerns of those in the city of Atlanta. And so, but the most important aspect of the CBA is that we evaluate every candidate, which reflects the candidate's overall preparedness for office and the understanding of the issues outlined in our 2025 policy platform. So how do we arrive at these scores? There are two important steps. So step number one, we ask all the candidates to complete a written questionnaire based on issues presented in our policy platform. Each candidate's completed and unedited questionnaire is published on our website. So you'll be able to see everything that all of the candidates have responded to and the questions that we've asked. Once the candidates submit their written questionnaire, we conduct personal interviews with each candidate. The questions used during our interviews are also published on our website. So it's a two-step process to really make sure that candidates have the time to answer the questions, really be thoughtful, but then in the interview, we really want to see how they respond, how they, you know, respond to our questions and our policies. So after both of those steps are finished, we crunch the numbers and we publish, and we crunch the numbers and we publish the scores. We promote our scores through social media, advertisements, news, and media partners all across the city as well as other creative methods to ensure that voters can easily access all of the scores. And we know that it's very important that voters do that. So as you can see, I'm waiting, my voter sticker already voted today because there's a special election today. So we want to make sure that everybody in the city, the city of Atlanta that is voting has the information that they need and the information they need to make informed decisions. Jordan?
So in addition to publishing the results, many of our member companies and organizations share the outcomes with their employees, and we've seen in the past many candidates share their own scores as well. Some candidates may not. It's your choice. Ultimately, we want to ensure that all candidates have the opportunity to discuss the issues that matter most to the business and civic community. So that is CBA in a nutshell. We want to thank our candidates, our board members, our guests, and again, the Gathering Spot. Now we'll turn it back over to Thomas Wheatley with Axios Atlanta.
Thanks, Jordan. Thanks, Tiffany. For our first panel, we have candidates for City Council District Two. As a reminder, there's a map of City Council districts on our website, c b a t l dot org to figure out which district you live in, if you don't know already. Candidates, here I'm going to ask you to very briefly introduce yourselves. We're going to limit you to 30 seconds each. As you can see, and the audience can also see, we do have a shot clock to help you end on time. The numbers will turn yellow at 10 seconds and red at five seconds, and if you run it, if you run over, I'll ask you to finish your thought. As far as our format, I'm going to ask a question, and a few candidates will have a chance to answer it. We will switch up the order each time. The last question will go to all of the candidates. This forum is not a debate, and there will not be opportunities to ask other candidates questions or rebuttals. So candidates, please take the 30 seconds to introduce yourself. Alex Jones, we'll start with you.
Hello. Hey, everybody. My name is Alex Bevel-Jones. I'm running for City Council District Two. In short, my family has lived in Atlanta for 150 years, and I could not be more proud of that fact, and I could not be more proud of the fact that I call District Two home. It is not only the place where I met my wife and I started my family, but it is where I have poured my heart, my energy, and my soul and my purpose into. I very much think that it's time for action in this city, and I'm here to deliver on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Kelsey, we're going to go down the line, too.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelsey Bond. I'm in Atlanta, native. I'm a community organizer, former union member, and former education policy worker. I'm running because I love Atlanta, but Atlanta has become unaffordable for regular working people. Rent is through the roof. The cost of buying a home remains out of reach for many young people like me. We are decades behind where we need to be on public transit, and we have the highest wealth gap in the nation. The time is now to build a city that works for everybody, no matter their income bracket.
Jacob?
Thank you so much, and thank you to the committee for having us today. My name is Jacob Chambers, running for City Council District Two. I'm a Georgia Tech grad and an engineer, so I bring a very data-driven, solution-oriented approach to my campaign, which is built on three big issues: making it easier to buy or rent a home in our city, fixing our broken transportation system, and ensuring that every Atlantin has access to a thriving, livable, walkable neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ocean?
Good morning, and I want to thank everybody for being here, creating this space, the other candidates as well, for stepping up to participate in our democracy. It's so critical. My name's Ocean Zatik, and I was born on the boulevard in Georgia Baptist Hospital. So I feel that this city is my birthright. It is our birthright collectively, and I'm here to see that we continue to thrive and to prudently manage all of our city's resources to create a more responsible, more equitable, and a more just city for all of us.
Thank you. Courtney?
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm running for District Two because we're at a pivotal point in our history. We not only have the challenges of projects undelivered, but we also have the transformative potential of our growth. We need someone sitting in the seat with the knowledge and the experience to navigate complex conversations to deliver those items. I am that candidate. I'm ready on day one, not only from my track record of 10 years of civic leadership and community advocacy, but also as a child. I grew up in a family, hard-working families, of civic servants and community volunteers. They taught me to be part of something bigger than myself, and I am prepared. I am also long-winded, so 30 seconds is very hard. Everyone that knows me in this room knows this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next question is for Kelsey and Courtney. Recent policies have prioritized the development of publicly owned land, including Two Peachtree, 143 Alabama, the Midtown Fire Station, and many others. What more should be done to ensure the completion of these critical development projects? Kelsey, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so I mean, if anybody has been reading the news recently, you may have noticed we have a major issue delivering on infrastructure projects and housing developments that we promised to Atlanta voters. I think we need to make sure that city departments that handle these projects are fully staffed and that we're adequately funding things like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which has not really been used for the things that it was originally meant for. So we need to be allocating affordable housing funds towards affordable housing and building new housing that's affordable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney?
First, I would like to say that I commend the mayor and his focus on affordable housing. He created a team of people that came up with creative solutions for something like Engine 15 in Midtown. I have direct experience working with that team and currently working with them now to ensure things about that project are continued into perpetuity, that we come up with creative ways to make sure that our affordable housing stays affordable forever, and I appreciate being part of that stakeholder team. I'd like to see more of those projects, the density bonus that was recently passed for SPI 16 and MRC 3. I also support it.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Alex and Jacob. The necessary resources and support services are needed in each district to serve our unsheltered populations. What do you think is the biggest need in your district, and what would you do to bridge that gap? Start with Alex.
I mean, I think, I think the biggest thing right now is, is long-term residents don't need to be displaced. They need to be accepted and provided a home. I think the biggest thing facing this population right now is mental health, and I think it's something that we as a city need to do a much better job of, of giving these people the attention and the service that they need. And I ultimately think that this is a problem that Atlanta's not unique to. I think we're all looking at our neighbors as to what is the answer going to be, and we're not doing enough to proactively find that. And I think Atlanta has the opportunity to really be the standard bearer here when it comes to this issue, and I think it's just time that we stand up and actually take action with this.
The thing that our district needs, and not just District Two, but every district in our city, is housing. Homelessness is fundamentally a housing problem, and the data is very clear that the single greatest determiner of how bad a homelessness problem is in the city is its availability of affordable housing. So as a council member, I would prioritize making sure that people in all levels of income have access to housing. That means transitional projects like The Melody by Garnet Marta Station in places where that makes sense, and also making sure that housing is more generally affordable to keep people out of homelessness in the first place.
Thank you. If you don't live near the Belt Line East Side Trail, visiting the path often requires sitting in bumper-to-bumper traffic. How can the city make the Belt Line more accessible and improve overall transportation in the area? 30 seconds each. We'll start with Courtney this time.
Okay. We have a transit problem in our city, and it's a problem not because of the way our city has operated in the past, but because of the growth we see in the future. We need to be prepared for that, so we need to continue with creative solutions to curbside management. We need to look at a transit network. Just simply expanding MARTA is not going to be a solution for Atlanta because of infrastructure constraints. We need to harness the potential of the Belt Line in some form, and I look forward to studying that as a council member and figuring out that right path forward.
Ocean?
Well, as a first-generation Cuban-American, my family actually lived on Argon Avenue for a number of years, and it was a very different neighborhood. It was a very different time. Traffic was very different. I think we definitely need to leverage technology as much as possible in these situations as we continue to work with MARTA and other transit solutions. I think we need to leverage rider data. We need to leverage traffic data. And we just have to do whatever we have to do to make things more accessible for everyone and also think about cost as well.
Thank you. Jacob?
So access to the Belt Line from all parts of our city boils down to two big issues. The first is delivering the project that Atlantans have voted on, we've paid for, and that is Belt Line Rail, and that is something that our city needs to start productively delivering on with, with tracks in the ground as soon as possible. The second, we need a network of connected, protected bike and scooter lanes to make sure that people who live in neighborhoods like Midtown have access to the Belt Line through projects like the 10th Street Cycle Track, which has been transformative for our neighborhood, but throughout the city and not just in places like Midtown.
Thank you. Kelsey?
In 2016, voters in Atlanta voted by overwhelming margins to support the more MARTA project. This included bus rapid transit with dedicated lanes. This included Belt Line Rail. I think we need to follow through on the promises we make. We need to restore faith in democracy by carrying out democratic decisions that are made by city of Atlanta voters. We also, you may notice that the Belt Line itself is very crowded. There's a lot of traffic with scooters and bikes, and I think, like Jacob said, I think this means we need more dedicated bike lanes and a network throughout the city so that we're not crowding everybody on the Belt Line because that really indicates a shortage of alternative ways to get around the city that feel safe for pedestrians.
First off, I think the Belt Line is, is the shot in the arm the city didn't know that it needed, and it literally has, has invigorated the city in ways that we didn't know were possible. I firmly agree with some of these statements that have been said. I think connectivity is the word that, that, that we need to focus on. When the Belt Line was designed, it had light rail in mind and had connectivity with all of MARTA stations. That has to happen, guys. I mean, this is simply put, since MARTA became an idea 50 years ago, it has been kicked down the road time and time again on how we can improve this system and make it more effective. effective for all Atlantans. And I think it's time that an administration and a council finally makes the hard decisions and, and makes this thing happen.
Thank you. This next question is for Ocean and Jacob. Atlanta's aging infrastructure, including its water and sewer systems, viaducts and bridges, requires significant investment, with more needed than the identified resources. What do you see as the council's role in prioritizing needs and securing the resources needed to be successful in executing? Let's begin with Jacob.
Yeah, our water and sewer system is in desperate need of repair and every time that a new sinkhole opens up, I think we all see that and feel that very viscerally. We should not be a city where major swathes of our population are going without clean water for a week at a time. With infrastructure over 100 years old, there are going to be some really tough decisions and tough trade-offs that come with that. One thing that we need to do is to look towards really diverse funding sources, including reaching out to the state to see if we can get additional sales tax options passed in order to actually invest in these aging infrastructure systems for the next century and not rely on pipes from the 1880s.
Ocean?
So, one of the things that I do outside of this is that I'm an HOA board president of a community that's about 45 years old. And I know very keenly how it feels to have infrastructure that is aging, aging in place, as they call it, or other terms, and it is a big challenge. I think that deferred maintenance is always going to be an issue. I think that seeking funding is going to be important. I don't know if taxing people is necessarily the best way for our families, but we definitely have to prioritize our infrastructure that goes with anything. It goes with a car, a house, a neighborhood, a city. It goes for everything.
Thank you. Atlanta now possesses a state-of-the-art training center for police officers and firefighters, yet staffing levels remain below target. What policies would you propose to help meet recruitment and retention goals? And I'm sorry, this is for Kelsey and Alex. Kelsey, please start. Sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, I've been a long opponent of the Public Safety Training Center. I think that there was a real lack of respect for democracy that was demonstrated when voters were not allowed to hold a referendum vote on the issue. I think when we make infrastructural choices like this, we need community buy-in, we need the public's participation. I also think this was an exorbitant use of funds that could have been used on major infrastructure projects that have been backlogged for years. At the same time, when it comes to public safety, we need to invest in other comprehensive forms of public safety, such as expanding PAD to operate 24/7 all around the city, because let's face it, police officers are not equipped to handle cases dealing with mental health or homelessness and we need trained professionals who are trained in de-escalation, who are trained in tackling mental health crises so we can keep everyone safe in the city.
Thanks, Kelsey. Alex?
I'm a firm believer that our first responders and our police officers especially need all the resources they can to do their job as effectively and safely as they can. So I staunchly support the training facility. I think that this was a excellent move for not only the city, but it's also a way for Atlanta to show the rest of the country that this is how we can get things done. And ultimately, again, I think that when you're talking about first responders and policemen, they need to have all the training and resources they can to do their job the best that they can. So, I am fully in support of this and I will support this in perpetuity because I think this is the strongest move for our city.
Thank you. This question is for Courtney and Ocean. Community improvement districts, or CIDs, play a vital role in advancing local initiatives and speeding up capital projects in our cities. If elected, how do you plan to collaborate with the CIDs in your district to support and implement effective solutions? Courtney, we'll start with you.
I will continue to do what I've already been doing for 10 years. As a former president of the Midtown Neighbors Association and NPUE chair, I've worked with CIDs for quite some time. I've seen the great potential they have to maximize the impact of city projects by being essential partners. I've been present for changes that Midtown Alliance has made to the procurement process in order to speed projects. I've seen the investment that they make in arts and culture and community engagement at the street level and I see the way that business associations depend on them to represent their needs, so I will continue to be a strong supporter and partner.
Thank you, Courtney.
One of the things that I have learned so far as a member of the NPUM Safety Committee is that there are so many people in our city who are making so many efforts to bring a new business, a new enterprise, a new nonprofit, and our public-private partnerships have so much potential in the city. And so, when you actually have people who are cooperating in this fashion, I think that it's really important, yes, to stimulate the economy, yes, to bring arts and culture, yes, to make these quality-of-life things more accessible, but really it's just all of the above. And when people actually step up and actually offer something, we need to be behind those people. Those are the people that are going to make our city great.
Thanks, Ocean. This is the final question and for this one, everybody gets 60 seconds. What is the, what is the primary issue facing your district and why are you the candidate to address it? And we'll start with Alex.
I think the primary issue facing our district is development. In District Two alone, we've got several million square feet of new development that's coming down the pipeline right now. And ultimately, there needs to be more community involvement when these developments come about. I won't mention them by names, but I know that we've had some recently that have been quite contentious and I think ultimately it could have been avoided if there, if there had been more open lines of communication amongst the communities themselves. As the president of the Virginia Highland Civic Association, I'm very much ingrained in this sort of process and how this needs to be done. Ultimately, I think that we need to develop smartly and not as recklessly as I think the city's been doing for a long time now. I think we need to address zoning, I think we need to address public housing and affordability, and I think that all goes into proper planning and communication from the start. So, I think that's the biggest issue facing District Two and it's something I'm very passionate about and I think I have the experience to ultimately help this city where it really needs it right now.
Thank you. Kelsey?
So, we've knocked over 10,000 doors for our campaign so far and the issues that come up time and time again are the exact issues that I'm running on and that's affordable housing and expanding public transit. My district is majority renter and as a renter myself, I've had to move from apartment to apartment within District Two over the last 10 years because my rent keeps increasing. This is a struggle that many voters in my district face. There were many promises made to build affordable housing along the Beltline, but when it comes to service workers and low-income workers, they don't find that housing affordable. We need to redefine what affordable really means in the City of Atlanta in a way that's inclusive of everybody. We also need to ensure that we're pairing affordable housing with public transportation because thousands of people are set to move to the City of Atlanta in the years to come and we need to make sure that we are prepared with a robust mass transit network that is able to get people to and from work each day so we can avoid long commutes and so that we can build a green, sustainable city that is sustainably growing in the decades to come.
Thank you. Jacob?
The primary issue facing District Two, and not just District Two, but the city as a whole, is that for an entire generation now, the fundamental promise of the American dream feels increasingly out of reach and that is the ability to own a home. I have extraordinarily deep family roots, not just in Atlanta, but in this district. I have family roots in this district going back more than 70 years, when my grandfather moved here to go to Georgia Tech and he decided to stay in Midtown after he graduated. But today, I am genuinely uncertain if I will be able to carry on that family legacy and stay, not just in Atlanta, but in District Two. We need to awaken to the reality that housing is becoming fundamentally unaffordable, not just for people who are living here, but for younger folks like me who are trying to stay in this city. And as your council member, I will fight every single day to make sure that the American dream remains a reality for not just my generation, but more generations to come in the future.
Thank you.
When Kamala Harris came to our neighborhood and gave a speech at the civic center, her powerful words wafted over into my backyard. "Good evening, good evening, good evening, everyone." Her voice wafted over the park, over the homeless folks, over the cracked sidewalks that still haven't been repaired, over the pickleball court that still hasn't been built, over all the imperfections of this land that I live on and that we all share. And still, I'm here and this is what we need to do, is to continue fighting to make our governmental unit, our city, more transparent, more accountable, more equitable. Yes, affordability is a huge crisis, it's a huge problem. Also, homelessness is a moral plight. It is extremely disturbing to witness. We need to tackle that a lot harder and we need to really just get it even more tight, even more together. You know, we don't want cracks in the sidewalk. We want to honor our city and elevate it and polish it and really build it up to a beacon on a hill. I mean, wasn't that what it was supposed to be at the beginning?
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you. I suppose at first I would say I don't disagree with many of the things that my colleagues have set up here, but the art of being the representative of District Two is understanding there isn't one, one primary priority. Our district is wildly complex. We are at the center of the city and there are layers to everything that we do. One thing affects another. I would say that housing, transportation, and safety are the three most popular topics when you poll anyone, of course, but there are complex layers to solving all of those. I would say that smart development, so that we are embracing transit-centered housing, housing that is of various different types, housing that's accessible to everyone that wants to work in our district, but safety, keeping our finger on the pulse of keeping crime trends where they are today and continuing to lower retention and recruitment. There, there isn't one issue, there's many and you need someone who can address all of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candidates, thank you for your thoughtful answers. We wish we had more time to continue this panel, but we have more candidates to hear from this morning and it's imperative that we stay on time. Audience, let's give all these candidates a round of applause, please. Thank you for joining us. So, now the candidates on panel one are going to leave the stage. We're going to welcome the next panel of city council district candidates. While that's happening, I want to say a friendly hello to the viewers who are watching this forum live via YouTube. The folks on the Committee for a Better Atlanta are committed to informing and educating Atlanta voters about these races. And please remember to follow CBA on LinkedIn and Twitter. And next panel is half of the candidates for city council District 11. And they are Andre Bergen, Kirk Collier, Stephen Dingle, Harold Hartnett, and Tony Ingram. If y'all could please take the stage. Oh, God, I'm sorry. We're going to do a quick pause. Sorry. Got it. City Council District 11. As a reminder, there is a map of city council districts on our website, cbatl.org. Candidates, similar to the first panel, I'm going to ask you a very, ask you to very briefly introduce yourselves. We're going to limit you to 30 seconds each. As you can see, and the audience can also see, we do have a shot clock to help you end on time. The numbers turn yellow at 10 seconds and red at 5 seconds and if you run too long over, I'll ask you to please finish your thought. As far as our format, I'm going to ask a question and a few candidates will have a chance to answer it. We will switch up the order each time. The last question will go to all of the candidates. This forum, again, is not a debate. There will not be opportunities to ask other candidates questions or rebuttals. Please take 30 seconds to introduce yourself. Andre, we'll start with you.
Good morning. I'm Andre Bergen, running for Atlantic City Council District 11. I know our neighborhoods because I lived our challenges. I'm from a working-class background. I'm CAU and FAMU educated and for the last 15 years, I worked in tech, worked for Silicon Valley companies like Career Builder and Meta. I came back to give back and for the last seven years, I worked as co-chair of the Atlas Park Residents Association, working on problems that affect District 11. I want to do more of that as councilman.
Thank you. Kirk?
Hello, I'm Kirk Collier, servant leader, father of six, husband almost 20 years. For 15 years, I've taught in public schools, many in Atlanta. As a real estate broker, I've helped to connect people with opportunities. As a neighbor, I successfully helped to get speed bumps along our roads to keep the community safe. I've helped with disputes on taxes to keep our elderly in place. And I believe that Atlanta deserves transparent governance, safe neighborhoods, and growth that uplifts the people that are already here. District 11 means leadership rooted in service and I'm ready to deliver.
Thank you, Kirk. Stephen?
Good morning. I'm Stephen Dingle, candidate for Atlanta City Council District 11. I'm also Clark Atlanta University educated. My family has been here since I've been alive and dedicated a lot to the City of Atlanta. My father worked for the city, the Department of Watershed before working for Bronner Brothers, which I have personally worked for my entire life. They were all MLK and a Bronner Brother hair show. My mother is a school teacher. My wife is a school teacher in the City of Atlanta, married, father of three, and then my uncle was the municipal clerk for 20, 30 years and Larry Dingle. So, again, my family has given a lot to this city and I plan to continue to do so as your next city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Harold?
Good morning. My name is Harold Hartnett. I'm a native Southwest Atlantin. I was born and raised in Southwest Atlanta. I have five generations of family in Southwest Atlanta. I am the creator of the largest project that's going on in District 11 now, the Greenbrier CID, which is a community improvement district. I'm also the co-founder of Atlanta Southwest, Taste of Southwest Atlanta, where we give parades and things every year. My background is native, native Southwest Atlantin. I attended Marsh Brown College, Frederick Douglass High School. My panel is public safety, affordable housing, infrastructure, and transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Tony?
Hi, I'm Tony Bealan Ingram and I'm running for Atlanta City Council District 11 because I believe every neighborhood deserves to be safe, clean, and thriving. As a proven leader, mother, and servant of the community, I've spent my life bringing people together to solve problems. I'm running for, I'm running to make sure that that same energy comes to District 11 and the voices of District 11 are heard and that we get our fair share of city resources, business opportunity, and infrastructure investment.
Thank you. This next question, or the first question, is for Kirk, Andre, and Tony. Coordination and a productive relationship between the mayor, council president... Coordination and a productive relationship between the mayor, council president, and city council is critical for moving Atlanta forward. If elected, how do you plan to work with this current council and the mayor to continue advancing the city? Let's start with Kirk.
Can you repeat that first part one more time?
Sure.
Yeah, the volume's low.
Sure. Coordination and a productive relationship between the mayor, council president, and city council is critical for moving Atlanta forward. If elected, how do you plan to work with this current council and the mayor to continue advancing the city?
Well, collaboration is key. Staying on task, making sure that communication is amicable is important. Really just speaking in your mind, explaining exactly how you feel about it, what your constituents feel, and that you're representing those ideals.
Andre?
In tech, we have this term called ruthless prioritization. It means that we make sure that the most important projects are the ones that we tackle first, right? So when we talk about ruthless prioritization, we need to ask a couple of things, right? What's the impact of the project? How many people are going to be affected? Two, how urgent and time-sensitive that it's going to be? And then two, how do we fund it, right? Like, we have to put plans to action, and we have to do it strategically. So working with the mayor's office and city council, ruthlessly prioritizing the most important projects, and a lot of those happen to be in District 11.
Tony?
I'd start with prayer and fasting, because I'm also a minister. But good governance means that we would make sure people are accountable and ethical and inclusive. And so I would chat and open communication and publish regular updates, and ensure that we were working together to advocate for the least of these and ensure that everyone had an opportunity to thrive.
Thank you. Stephen, Harold, this next question is for you. The city has committed more than $3.5 billion in infrastructure funding through programs such as Moving Atlanta Forward, the special local option sales tax, or TSPLOST, resurfacing improvements, and the Moore-Marta program. What would you do, if elected, to ensure these major taxpayer-funded projects are delivered successfully, transparently, and on time? Stephen?
Well, first of all, in Southwest Atlanta, we all know the Campbellton Corridor MARTA project was supposed to happen years ago. So for me, that's an important thing for our side of town, is bringing a light rail transit or a bus rapid transit to our side of town and working with city council and MARTA to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are going to work to service communities so they can transport within our community and also experience other parts of Atlanta that we all know we want people to enjoy and be able to participate in.
Harold?
Well, number one, like I said, with my project, Cascade, the Greenbrier CID, I've already met with MARTA with different projects that we're working on now. And one thing is make sure transparency is done, make sure that everything is accounted for, make sure that my district gets what we're striving for. That's why I'm not waiting until I get elected to start doing projects. I'm already doing them now, and when I get elected, I'll just push for it even more.
This next question is for all of the candidates, and it also has to do with Campbellton Road BRT. The Campbellton Road Bus Rapid Transit Line is the district's most significant transportation project. What would you do as a council member to ensure the project is successful? 30 seconds. Start with Kirk.
First off, stay on top of the transportation department. We've had numerous meetings about what's happening on Cascade Road. The answers that we've received have never been adequate. A lot of, "What would you guys like? Can we get it done by September?", but no real answers. So staying accountable, making them accountable with their reports, staying in their office to make sure that the work is done on time and correctly.
Andre?
Again, when it comes to tech, we have a lot of projects that need to be done, and the way we do it is through RACI charts, right? We need to know who's responsible, who's accountable, who needs to be consulted and informed, right? And we need to do that from end to end, with clear milestones on what we need to achieve on the path to actually the end state that we envisioned for Campbellton Corridor. We already know that Campbellton has some of the highest transportation wait times in the city, and it's important for the BRT to be executed perfectly without delays and without disruptions to the businesses in the Atlanta community.
Harold?
The meeting that my team and I've had with MARTA, Revist of the BRT, it's come along slowly, but they've already met with us to incorporate how we want to do our CIT with the BRT and how it's going to make things better, as far as a barge road parking ride, setting up something at Greenbrier Mall, because so many of our constituents in District 11 use public transportation. The two of the busiest bus routes for MARTA is in District 11. And that's the reason why I want to make sure my CIT that I'm doing incorporates along with MARTA to make things better for the transit, because transportation is so important.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, when I attended Clark Atlanta University, I actually stayed on Village on the Green right beside Greenbrier Mall. So I had to take the 183 bus to the MARTA station to work in Midtown at the Armour Hotel. So I know firsthand how long and convenient those wait times can be, because I would have to leave two hours before my shift started. So although it's better than traffic, it could take a long time. So I know how valuable, bringing that rapid bus transit, bus rapid transit, excuse me, to Campbellton Road, how much it'll increase the value of our city and expedite those longer wait times that people are experiencing now.
Tony?
I think the dilemma is that we don't have enough inter-agency conversations, and we don't convene enough to talk about what MARTA has not done. Bus 83 and 71, as they've said, has lots of riders, and people are not being able to get to work. They're not being able to get home from work. They're not being able to pick up their kids from school. And so MARTA and the city of Atlanta need to work together on joint planning initiatives and include people who ride the bus regularly and have a memorandum of understanding that clarifies the roles and ensures that they do the work they're supposed to do.
Thank you. Next question is for Harold and Andre. What is one partnership that you think is most essential to the city's success, and what needs to be done to enhance collaboration? Andre, let's start with you.
Okay. Most important relationship is between, our relationship between the residents and technology. AI is coming. Technology is going to be shaping our city, and either we shape it or it's going to shape us. So as we come together, we need to make sure that we are training our current residents for the jobs of the future, whatever that looks like, and the tech community can lead the charge in terms of skills training and building.
That I agree with. Technology is really important because of the way the world is moving now, and a lot of seniors, a lot of our constituents in District 11 are seniors, and a lot of them are not very tech savvy, and it would be good to come in and give them training to make it better, because if they still live another 20 or 30 years, they're going into the new millennial just like everybody else. So, yeah, technology would be really important for our district.
Thank you. Fifth question is for Tony, Stephen, and Kirk. Atlanta faces challenges with underutilized land and spaces. What is your strategy for accelerating transformative development projects that expand the tax base while ensuring these developments also align with community interests? Tony, let's start with you.
There's got to be better project management systems. We've got to have greater financial transparency, performance-based contracts, and there has to be good people reporting, right? Independent audits to say what should happen, what we've agreed to, and ensure those things are happening.
Thank you. Stephen?
Um, I'm sorry. Can you read the question? I'm sorry about that.
Sure. Atlanta faces challenges with underutilized land and spaces. What is your strategy for accelerating transformative development projects that expand the tax base while ensuring these developments also align with community needs?
Absolutely. So I believe that people should be able to work, live, and play in the community that they live in. In Southwest Atlanta, I feel like there's a specific spot that, when I was at SWAT's Day the other day, which is a celebration for our side of town, I was talking to a lot of constituents about what the area needs, and everybody was talking about that property where Club Bigger ate, that I used to attend when I was in college, that's on Campbellton Road. It's been dilapidated since 2010, it feels like. So why can't we turn that into a skating rink, a bowling alley, something where the community can stay in the community and enjoy? So I think it takes a collaborative effort between the people, city government, and maybe even the private sector to create initiatives to bring things like that to our side of town.
Thank you. Kirk?
Well, one of the biggest underutilized areas, I believe, is downtown Atlanta. The business district is filled with many buildings that are undeveloped and unused. Getting businesses back into those communities and expanding the MARTA so that folks that live in Southwest Atlanta can get to those jobs. Now, we also have many abandoned schools, which could be redeveloped for many different purposes, as far as museums, parks, recreation, and that's where I think the dollars should go.
Thank you. Our final question is the same as during the first panel, and 60 seconds, each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer. What is the primary issue facing your district, and why are you the candidate to address it? Let's begin with Andre. Go down the line.
Okay, so we'll start with this. District 11 has more plans than shovels, right? We have a plan for MARTA. We have a plan from the ARC, but what we don't have is execution. We don't have funding. We don't have shovels in the ground. One of the things that we want to do when we improve the neighborhood, we want to add to it, but we don't want to displace the people, and I think that's important. So the way that we do this is going to have to be through that framework that I was talking about before. Hold people accountable, have clear milestones, have technology help us track and keep transparency clear and open to everyone. And as we continue to raise those funds and put shovels in dirt, let's make sure that we have clear understanding of what the people want, as well as what the data says. We know Southwest Atlanta has some of the worst economic mobility in the city. That goes for the city, but it's smack dab in District 11. So the plans that we have have to work for the people today and the people tomorrow.
Thank you. Kirk?
The biggest problem that District 11 faces is neglect. Neglect where our tax dollars go into projects that should have been done years ago. Campbellton Corridor, Cascade Road, taking multiple years, more years than should be to get completed. Our transportation outside of just those two corridors is limited. There was about, two years ago, I had faced some travel problems with myself. My car went out, and I used the public transportation system. I used the buses and the MARTA to get to work, and I found that while MARTA worked fine, the buses were extremely slow. So that's a big deal. And, excuse me. And the last thing I would say outside of transportation is just our seniors are in big trouble as far as displacement. I believe that initiatives like the tax incentive are good, but we need to have more to keep our residents in place.
Thank you, Kirk. Stephen?
I think our biggest issue is, I won't use the word neglect because Kirk said it, but just making sure that Southwest Atlanta isn't left behind when Atlanta is growing. One of my campaign slogans is "Growing Atlanta While Preserving the Culture of Atlanta." And Southwest Atlanta needs a lot of economic development and infrastructure. We all understand the history that Southwest Atlanta has provided to the city. Several mayors still live there, so they obviously understand the history of Southwest Atlanta. Look how many candidates we have. We have people who care. We have people who want to make the area better, but we need to execute. And with that, I think that comes from us doing our jobs, whether we're elected or not, and making sure of that. It's revitalizing Greenbrier Mall, and it's making sure that as Atlanta has these international and national events, that people experience Southwest Atlanta as well. When you look at the culture of Southwest Atlanta, it truly defines what it means to be an Atlantin. So everybody across the world and country knows that, but when we have the Super Bowl, the MLB All-Star, and the World Cup, are they going to come to Southwest Atlanta? That's tough, so we need to do things to revitalize our area, make it safe, and that way everyone can enjoy, mainly the people who live there, but we want people to come visit and experience our side of town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold?
I feel two of the main things for District 11 is transportation and infrastructure. We've had a number of apartments built in our area, and that brings more people to our area. And with that, we already, like I said, we already have two of the busiest bus routes for MARTA already. And now we're building even more apartments in our area. So transportation is going to be a big thing, because right now it's two new apartment complexes that's being built right now. One on Barge Road and one on Campbellton Road. That is an infrastructure. That is one of the reasons why I started the Greenbrier CID, because Greenbrier has been a neglected area for years, and that is the reason why I wanted to put more emphasis on it and bring things to that area, to beautify the area, and also work with the management at Greenbrier Mall as well on different projects to make sure Greenbrier gets better. So that area is really important, as well as Cascade area. And also, a lot of things have been neglected in the area, and I think they need to be taken care of. And it started with Greenbrier Mall, because we have a mall in our district.
Tony?
My priorities are safer neighborhoods, cleaner streets, and that we'd have stronger support for our businesses. Just this past week, we had shootings on Campbellton Road and right off Cascade at BP. We've had ICE agents to come and take people from the BP on Cascade and at 285. We need safer streets for the people that we live with. I want to create community spaces and enhance code enforcement, but also expand access to city resources for people in District 11. Also, it means that we have to, and to do that, I guess I would ensure that every voice is heard, especially those who are unheard, so that we can shape the city's future for all of Atlanta and not just a particular few. My goal would be to lead with heart, centered equity, and craft policy. As they said, we are full of senior citizens, and to ensure that all the senior citizens are also represented.
Thank you very much. Candidates, thank you for your thoughtful answers. We wish we had more time, but we have more candidates to hear from this morning, including in this race. It's imperative that we stay on time. Audience, please give these candidates a hand and thank them for coming. So now the candidates on Panel Two are going to leave us. We're going to welcome the next panel. Once again, a friendly hello to the viewers who are watching this forum on YouTube. Thanks for tuning in, taking the time to inform yourself. And please remember to follow CBA on LinkedIn and Twitter at CBA, CB Atlanta. We're going to take a quick break. The candidates for City Council District eleven, as well as candidates for District twelve. As a reminder, there is a map of City Council candidates on the Committee for a Better Atlanta website, cbatl.org. Candidates, I'm going to ask you to very briefly introduce yourselves. We're going to limit you to thirty seconds each, as we have during the other panels. As you can see, the audience can also see, we have a shot clock to help you end on time. The numbers will turn yellow at ten seconds and red at five seconds. As far as our format, I'm going to ask a question, and a few candidates will have a chance to answer it. We will switch up the order each time. The last question will go to all the candidates. This forum is not a debate, and there will not be opportunities to ask other candidates questions or rebuttals. Candidates, please take thirty seconds to introduce yourself. Nate Jester, we will start with you and then work down the line.
Good morning. My name is Nate Jester. I'm running for Atlanta City Council District eleven to represent southwest Atlanta where I was born and raised. I am a Ben Hill native, a Mayes High School graduate, a Marine Corps veteran, and a Harvard-trained real estate attorney and small business owner. I am running to bring bold, new, and accountable leadership to southwest Atlanta, focusing on delivering the housing, services, support, and safety that we deserve. If you're looking for a leader that will listen to the people and take action, then please put your faith in Nate. I'm Nate Jester for Atlanta City Council.
Thank you, Nate. Wayne?
Good morning, and thank you to CBA. My name is Wayne Martin. I am a lifelong resident and son of southwest Atlanta, and I am proof of what's possible in this city. After experiencing homelessness as a young person, I graduated Thorough High School and Morehouse College. Uh, and I went on to build a meaningful career across the public sector, the quasi-government sector, and in the private sector. Atlanta helped my family move from adversity to opportunity, and I'm running to build on that work that I've been doing already over the years to ensure that every resident has the same opportunity as my family. I'm running to revitalize Campbellton Road, to preserve Cascade, its historic neighborhoods and parks and green spaces, and the stabilization of Camp Creek. Again, Wayne Martin, thank you so much, CBA.
Thank you, Wayne. Sherri?
Good afternoon. I'm Sherri B. for our community, Sherri B. Williams, Atlanta native, one of six children and daughter of labor. My father worked on the assembly line at General Motors Plant. I am a four-time breast cancer survivor, so I'm not afraid of anybody. I'm used to surviving. I'm running because people call me when they want to get things done. From sidewalks to transportation and transit, to connecting our youth and our seniors and veterans to the resources they need. My platform is based on family values, working family values, seniors, and veterans' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. We're now moving to District twelve. Stephanie, Stephanie Flowers, please.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Flowers, and I'm running for District twelve City Council. I'm an Atlanta native. I live in the community of Pittsburgh, where I have resided for forty years. I have served as the Chair of Neighborhood Planner Unit V, as well as the Atlanta Planner and Advisory Board. I also spent two decades working in underserved communities and working with at-risk youth. I have been dedicated to working with communities on the southwest side of town, making them a better place. And I'm committed to making District twelve the same place. Thank you.
Delvin Diggs?
Thank you, and thank you for the invite. My name is Delvin Davis, a sixth-generation Georgian and a third-generation Pittsburgh-Atlanta. I'm a proud graduate of Gideon's Elementary School, Parks Middle School, and Thorough High School. After attending Atlanta Public Schools, I attended Alabama State University, and I returned back to my community where I have been community-led ever since. And we look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Councilman Antonio Lewis.
And good morning. My name is Councilmember Antonio Lewis. I'm a community organizer, union organizer, civil rights leader, business owner, and a creative space owner. I am growing, I grew up right here in the city of Atlanta. They say fifth generation, fifth generation Atlanta, raised, born and raised right on Cleveland Avenue. Son of, son of a, son of the community, truly raised by the community, raised in a barber shop. My mom was, when I say this city is a part of, I'm, every piece of this city, my mom was murdered in this city. I grew up in a trap house in this city. I now own that trap house, and I bought a house down the street from that trap house to show people that you can do stuff in this city. If Antonio Lewis, a, a son of a mother of a lady slain, shot over twenty times in Dixie Hill, a son of a...
Council, Councilmember, you have, you have to finish your thought, I'm sorry.
Just, just trying to make sure that people know that we are Atlanta. We're running to keep this, to add some social mobility to this city.
Thank you, sir. This next question, or the first question is for Wayne, Nate, and Stephanie. Coordination and a productive, productive relationship between the mayor, council president, and city council is critical for moving Atlanta forward. If elected, how do you plan to work with this current council and the mayor to continue advancing the city? We'll start with Wayne.
That's a great question. I think that the city of Atlanta is a large business that provides public services. Uh, our mayor's our CEO, and the council's the board of directors. Uh, it is, and no CEO is strong without a strong board of directors to work alongside him or her in their work. And I think it's very critical that folks come to the city council with experience, with the ability to dream big, and also to execute on the strategies that will move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate?
Absolutely. So from my time as an officer in the Marines, to my time as a small business owner, to now as a nonprofit leader on multiple nonprofits that serve Atlanta, I understand how important it is to coordinate, for all of the leaders in a space to coordinate, to be able to achieve a goal. My focus will be on having regular meetings, clear, publicly communicated priorities, and a constant communication with the public to make sure that everyone knows what is going on. The people deserve, the people have a right to know how their dollars are being spent and what's going on with our projects. I'm committed to making that happen and working with everyone in city council and the mayor to make that happen.
Thank you, Nate. Stephanie?
I think it's important that with working with the city council, city council president and the mayor, is about building relationships first. Also, then it's about collaborating. And in collaboration, understanding what the relate, what the things mean to your district. How does the issues or concerns or things that are happening impact your particular district? So relationships, collaboration, and being clear about what your district need. And we, it'll be a great relationship and a partnership.
Thank you. The next question is for Councilman Antonio Lewis, Stephanie, and Delvin Davis. Mayor Andre Dickens has proposed plans to build the Belt Line's first transit line along the South Side Trail. Should this project be the priority for District twelve, or should other transportation needs be prioritized? Start with you, Councilman Lewis.
And I feel really good about that. Four years ago, they hadn't started on the South Side Belt Line Trail. What we did was I reached out to Senator Alsop, and he actually found ten million dollars to complete the South Side Belt Line Trail first. And because of that, the mayor, it made it, it made it an opportunity. This wouldn't even be possible without that initial investment. And so, yes, I, we need that. People who take the bus on the South Side, they take it to get to work, not to get to the mall, not to get to the airport. So they need it more. I think that this investment is needed on the South Side. I'm happy we got, we got it first, and it's all because of that initial investment of the ten million dollars on the Belt Line. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, I think it's important, I think it's important, but I also think it's important that we focus on transportation and around, outside of the Belt Line. So the Belt Line is important, but also, uh, transportation around the Belt Line is most important, because District twelve, we do have issues with transportation and mobility for our residents.
Delvin?
Thank you. And yes, the South Side has been neglected for generations. And so it's time for the South Side to get its due. So yes, I do support, um, the mayor's reversal of adding, um, Belt Line rail now on the South Side of Atlanta. However, and, and that will lead to other transit upgrades in our communities and our system. We have seniors that are still unable to get to grocery stores. We have kids still unable to activate our, our complete street safety initiatives in order to get to school. So I think this is a, a first step in building out the necessary infrastructure, transit infrastructure that we need on the South Side of Atlanta.
Thank you, Delvin. This is for District eleven candidates. The Campbellton Road Bus Rapid Transit Line is District eleven's most significant transportation project. What would you do as a council member to ensure this project is successful? Thirty seconds, we'll start with Nate.
I agree that Bus Rapid Transit is one of the most important projects that are hap, that's happening in southwest Atlanta right now. In order to make sure that delivery is, is on schedule, uh, and that what is promised is what's delivered, we need one, a, a publicly accessible dashboard that allows people to track in real time where the project is. We need quarterly, uh, or regular public meetings updating the people on what's going on with the project. And then finally, we need an independent audit of the, the program to make sure that we are hitting all of our goals on time, that people have a right to know how their tax dollars are being spent, and that projects are being delivered on time.
Sherri? Jump to Sherri.
Thank you for that question. I was a part of the original MARTA Bus Rapid Transit Light Rail Transit project. And what I believe that we need to do is I agree with, uh, my colleague Nate Jester. We need to have regular quarterly, um, meetings. We also need to have a forensic audit along the way to make sure that residents are holding all leaders and decision-makers accountable along the way to avoid having problems in the end. Thank you.
Wayne?
I think we need to ensure that taxpayer dollars and the investments that have been made are meeting the benchmarks that have been set. That project is long overdue, uh, and it is time to be delivered upon. And it's incumbent upon us as leaders in the community, whether elected or unelected, uh, to hold our rapid transit authority accountable. What we have to do in our district is ensure that people can move. The redevelopment of Fort McPherson is going to drive, uh, vast investment in the southwest Atlanta. That transportation node is going to be important, that it is completed, completed on time and done to the specifications of our community. I'm looking forward to leaning into that project as we go along the campaign, as well as after election. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four is for Antonio Lewis and Stephanie Flowers in District twelve, and Nate Jester in, in District eleven. We'll start with you, Councilman Lewis. Atlanta's aging infrastructure, including its water and sewer systems, viaducts and bridges, requires significant investment, with more needed than the identified resources. What do you see as council's role in prioritizing needs and securing the resources needed to be successful in executing this?
And just thinking about the consent decree that we already have with the federal government. Our goal and our job is to actually hit these numbers. And so I've been loud on saying, and talking to the Department of Watershed, in which we finally got a, a water guy actually running it. The goal is to make it to where people can actually drink water out of their faucets again, like we could when we grew up. And faucet is the word we're leaving, we use in the city of Atlanta. Right now, the federal government has already made an agreement with us to give us, to, to make it to where we would, that they would match some of the funding, but we're going to need other options, other, other people going to help us, and also to put the pressure on the mayor's office, because that's who actually does this. As a councilperson, you can get as loud as you want to about what you need, but this is also, it has to come from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Stephanie?
Can you repeat, repeat the question, please?
Sure. Uh, Atlanta is, Atlanta's aging infrastructure, including its water and sewer systems, viaducts and bridges, requires significant investment, with more needed than the identified resources. What do you see as council's role in prioritizing needs and securing the resources to, needed to be successful in executing, repairing this infrastructure?
I think the council role is to, um, one, to understand that we have water issues, we have flooding. I know in my, in my neighborhood, in my NPU, we have a lot of flooding issues, and we have a lot of water issues around drinking, and things happen. And so I think the council role in this is really stepping up to the plate, making sure that our districts get the services that we need around the water. Our streets should not be flooding. We should not have to go without drinking clean water, buy bottled water when needed. But we should have a council that steps up and identify and correct, along with the mayor's office, around correcting the problem with flooding and infrastructure that we have in our district.
Thank you, Stephanie. Nate?
I grew up in District eleven, uh, walking streets that didn't have sidewalks, riding my bike around roads that had potholes in them, taking MARTA to school and to work. I know how important our infrastructure is. Our infrastructure needs to connect us as a people to the places that we want to go in our community. As a council member, I will be focused on accountability, transparency, and equity, making sure that the dollars that are being allocated to our city are being prioritized to southwest Atlanta. We need a lot of work, and I am committed to making sure that the dollars get spent in our community. And when they are get spent, when those dollars are allocated, that the people are able to track and see that the projects are being delivered on time and as promised.
Thank you. Fifth question is for Sherri Williams and Wayne Martin Jr. of District eleven, and Delvin Davis of District twelve. What is one partnership that you think is most essential to the city's success? And what needs to be done to enhance collaboration? Sherri, let's start with you.
Thank you for that question. My godmother, the Reverend Willie, the late Reverend Willie Taplin-Barrow always said, "We are not so much divided as we are disconnected." So I believe that the partnership that's most important is that between the residents and the city council members. Because when you have a fully informed residents and voters, then you have less problems. So if we commit to having more information meetings, when we could commit to connecting them, and not just going to them at the end of a project, when the decision has already been made. We need to be involved every step along the way in every project, because these are our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne?
I think our most important partnership is that between the city of Atlanta and Atlanta Public Schools. Uh, Atlanta Public Schools is probably the largest economic development engine in the city. And it's important that we, uh, have a keen understanding in our city and our public school system move and strive. Uh, Atlanta Public Schools is also one of the largest owners of undeveloped and or underutilized land in the city. Uh, and I think the work that's already happening, that we're seeing around, uh, projects where old-school buildings are being converted into affordable housing, I think those kinds of partnerships will drive us forward. Lastly, our, our, the largest share of our tax dollars, dollars, go to APS. And so that is the most important partnership, uh, that we can, uh, build upon in our city, educating our children and also moving our city forward economically and from a community development perspective.
Thank you, Wayne. Delvin?
So the important partnership is between community and leadership. So oftentimes, and, and on the campaign trail for me, I talk to residents around District twelve, and their main concern is being left out of the process. They're only a part of the process when it's election time, when it's time to roll out the, the big investments in our communities, only when it's beneficial, uh, for political posturing. Our communities are being left behind, they're being left out of the process. So for me, I think in order to cultivate that, we have to continue to allow our communities to be participatory in the process.
Thank you, Delvin. Next question is for Councilman Lewis, uh, of District twelve, Delvin Davis, candidate for District twelve, and Sherri Williams for District eleven. The necessary resources and support services are needed in each district to serve our unsheltered populations. What do you think is the biggest need in your district? And what would you do to bridge that gap? Councilman Lewis?
And it's a, more than just one thing, so I use a term, social mobility. The issues we have are people don't see a way to grow in our, in our city. They're from our city, and they see people being successful, they hear about all these stories, but they don't see it for themselves. And so we've been doing, to close these gaps, we've been literally helping people with getting jobs, helping people with, with building middle and affordable housing, middle housing and affordable housing, which is what we're missing a lot. So our biggest issue is social mobility, and that's people having hope, people being able to grow. And social mobility hits on so many things. And the goal, my number one goal is to improve that 4% chance of people making it out of poverty. And so the South Side has different issues. Thank you again.
Thank you. Delvin?
Yes, it will be housing and wraparound services. Those are the resources that we need in District 12. And of course, we need economic mobility, inclusive economic growth in our communities in order for us to, I think, finally solve the housing crisis, but the crisis for the unhoused. Oftentimes, if you get off the exit on Cleveland Avenue and you talk to some of the individuals there, and they'll let you know, absolutely, there are services and resources that they need. Absolutely, they need us to continue to come and speak with them. And I think, again, we have to continue to connect the community with that and make sure that they have the housing and wraparound services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherry?
I agree. We do need wraparound services. But first and foremost, the community needs to know where the resources are. And we're talking about the real resources. We have a problem over at the Ben Hill Post Office that a lot of us have been working on for the past three years, trying to get the homeless out because they want to be in when it's cold and raining and you can't blame them. Calling 311 is not the solution. We need to make sure that that's a federal building, that our congresspeople are working on that along with 311 and constituency services. We need to make sure that our homeless people get real resources and not just are given a one-way bus ticket to a homeless shelter and then they can't get back to their stuff when the weather crisis is over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Final question. This is for all the candidates. Sixty seconds each. We're going to start with District 11. "What is the primary issue facing your district and why are you the candidate to address it?" Let's start with Nate.
My parents moved to Atlanta in the 60s to go to Morris Brown College and Atlanta University. And then they moved to southwest Atlanta to buy a home and start a family. That's where me and my sisters were raised. My sisters grew up in southwest Atlanta in the 90s and they talk all the time about what was going on on Campbellton Road. Me being born and raised in the district, I have seen what I view as the biggest problem in southwest Atlanta, which is a trend of underinvestment in our community. That trend of underinvestment and disinvestment has led to aging, aging infrastructure that does not adequately serve our community. It has led to a lack of resources and capital for our families and our businesses. And it has led to an undersupply of housing, which is putting pressure on our seniors, on our families, and on our first-time homebuyers and renters. What we need to do is bring a focus to delivering what southwest Atlanta needs, which is more investment across industries. That's more housing. That's more money for our small businesses. That's more money for our school system, for our education. That's more money for our programs that support our families in need. As a veteran business owner, nonprofit leader, I have the unique set of experiences to build a coalition of businesses, nonprofits, community leaders needed to be able to address this issue and bring the investment that southwest Atlanta needs and deserves.
Thank you, Nate. Wayne?
I think our largest issue in southwest Atlanta is underinvestment. It is, our area is ripe for investment. We're strategically located in the city, kind of right in the heart and the cusp of the southwest corner of the city. I think the way that I would address that is to bring to bear my public sector, quasi-government, private sector experience, working in some of the world's largest brands, working right at Atlanta Public Schools, being a chief of staff or a city council member. Bringing those skills to bear to do three things, and that is to secure the three Cs in our district. That is the preservation of Cascade, that is the revitalization of Campbellton Road, and that is the stabilization of Camp Creek. We can do that. Atlanta has developed a nationally recognized model of public-private partnership, working with the business community, the nonprofit community, residents and government to really envision a stronger Atlanta. District 11 is no different. I will bring those skills to bear and we'll get that work done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wayne. Sherry?
Thank you. Martin Luther King had a dream. I'm Sherry and I have a vision for southwest Atlanta. Southwest Atlanta residents want the same thing that everybody else in Atlanta and in this nation wants. We want a safe, economically thriving community that is beautiful. My mother lives in the same house that her and my father moved in in 1963. Her being able to age in place along with other citizens, along with having a vibrant transportation system. Nothing happens unless you can move people and products from point A to point B. The number 83 Campbellton Road bus is the second highest volume bus route all across MARTA. That means we need to move people to the places that they need to be in a timely manner. We also, you will also be able to utilize my skills from living all over the country. I know best practices. I've seen it. And I want to implement it for the residents of southwest Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
The primary issues I see that District 12 is facing, we have been far too long overlooked is economic development. I will reactivate some of the vacant properties that we have. I will create commercial pop-up shops within our district. And I will also make sure that the city is not, is being a partner and not creating hurdles for our businesses to grow and come. The second thing is public safety. Public safety is an issue in our district. I will ensure that we are working with programs, the diversion programs. I will bring back the neighborhood block captain program and also work with the mayor's office of violence reduction to see what kind of services and support that they can bring to District 12 that we may not know about. Thank you.
Thank you. Delvin?
So I think the biggest issue, the biggest problem, we have a host of issues on the South Side of Atlanta. But I think one of our biggest issues that we need, we need intentional leadership and collaboration. And that's one of the reasons why I got into this race. We need to make sure that we're cultivating relationships and collaborate with those individuals that are focusing on things that we truly care about. So for example, if we're talking about grocery access that's immensely needed on the South Side of Atlanta, I want to talk about partnering with Invest Atlanta and also partnering with council member Matt Westmoreland, who basically has a grocery fund, created a grocery fund, so we need to expand that. If we're talking about transit, I want to talk to the Department of Transportation. I want to make sure that we stay honed in and speak to those individuals and those entities that are currently focusing on that. When we're talking about economic mobility, we have to put the charge out here. Now that we're out here in front of great business leaders, we can't wait for you to invest in our neighborhoods when it's more desirable. We need you all to leave that focus and help us make it more vibrant and desirable. So when we have these forums in this particular section that we're able to communicate and collaborate, so that's the biggest issue that I feel that's on the South Side. We don't have intentional leadership, an intentional person that's going to collaborate with those entities to make it better. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's good. Councilman Lewis?
And once again, social mobility is the most important thing in our area. And it's going to always be a term we're going to use. When I was elected for, when I was born in the city of Atlanta, you can go to Grady Memorial Hospital and you can count 100 babies and only, if they were born in poverty, only four of them would see, would have any chance of making it out of poverty. That's the 4% chance that they talk about. If you're born in poverty in the city of Atlanta, you won't make it out. And so my goal since I've been in office has been doing that collaboration. Crime is down in District 12, 22%, not because we lock people up, but because we got people jobs, but because we actually had the police ride around with their blue lights on. That's initiative by me. When you hear the Mayor's Youth Program, Mayor's Year of the Youth, that's my program. That's the program that I was actually in school under in 2005. They brought it back. We did it in District 12 first in year one, in which I gave our organization $15,000 so they can do the pilot program for the Year of the Youth program that we have going wide. So social mobility is the biggest issue, city of Atlanta, for people live here. That encompasses everything. That encompasses that grocery fund store that I work with, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, to get done. The biggest issue is also people sleep at the wheel. I'm not a talker. I ran against a 17-year incumbent. I won. While some people are on MPUs and neighborhood associations, working with them.
Please finish your thought.
Yes, sir. But once again, social mobility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please give a hand to the candidates. So now we are, candidates on panel three are going to leave us. We're going to welcome the next panel of city council candidates. Once again, I want to say hello to the viewers who are watching this forum via YouTube Live. Thank you for tuning in and taking the time to inform yourself about these candidates. Please remember to follow CBA on LinkedIn and Twitter at CB Atlanta. And it's like before, I'm going to ask you to very briefly introduce yourselves. We're going to limit you to 30 seconds. As you can see, and the audience can also see, we do have a shot clock to help you end on time. The numbers will turn yellow at 10 seconds and red at five seconds. And I will ask you to finish your thought if you run slightly over. As far as our format, I'm going to ask a question and a few candidates will have a chance to answer it. We will switch up the order each time. The last question will go to all the candidates. The forum, again, is not a debate. There will not be opportunities to ask other candidates questions or rebuttals. So candidates, please take 30 seconds to introduce yourself. We're going to start at the far end with Councilmember Winston. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Jason Winston. I grew up south of Atlanta, but I've lived in Atlanta for more than half my entire life. I'm a proud husband, the father of two beautiful girls. We live in District 1 where we've resided for almost 20 years. And so I'm excited to represent southeast Atlanta as a member of the city council. So excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Perrin?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Perrin Bostic and I'm a candidate for Atlanta City Council District 3. And I'm running for city council because I, like many of my neighbors, believe that we can do better and at this moment calls for a new way forward. I spent my entire career working in public service as a former city council staffer, as well as a staffer for our U.S. Senator Raphael Warnock. And District 3 deserves leadership that cares and that's willing to show up and answer the tough questions.
District 4 Councilmember Jason Dodger.
Good morning, y'all. I am also Jason. I also serve in Atlanta City Council. I also am the proud father of two beautiful little girls. I represent District 4 in Atlanta City Council. I'm a homeowner in the Macanville community where I've lived for the last 10 years. I'm a United States Army veteran. As far as I know, the first and only veteran to serve in Atlanta City Council in the last 40 or 50 years. And before I served in Atlanta City Council, I spent over a decade working with military veterans, helping veterans find employment opportunities when they separate and go into the civilian world. And I'm proud to be here with y'all today, representing District 4.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hillis, District 9.
Thank you, everyone. Again, my name is Dustin Hillis, Councilmember for District 9. I have served on the council for seven and a half years now, looking forward to doing another four. I've been in Atlanta for 15 years. I got started immediately upon coming to Atlanta, got involved in my neighborhood association on their board, my MPU. Worked for my predecessor for two years and then ran and was elected to the city council in 2017. Prior to that, I was an ICU nurse at Emory University Hospital, where I worked in the neuroscience ICU and also the Ebola team back in those days. And again, looking forward to your vote and serving four more years on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles?
Thank you, CBA. My name is Charles Bourgeois and I'm running for Atlanta City Council in District 9. And I'll tell you, I am a proud graduate of Morehouse College. I've lived here 20 years and I've only ever lived in northwest Atlanta. And I want to make a moment to just say that I am not a politician by any means. I am a father. I'm a husband. I'm a businessman. I'm a hospitality executive. And it is with that measure of hospitality that I know how to serve people. I'm here to build bridges and transform and reconnect through 318. Thank you.
Thank you. First question is for Perrin, Charles, and Councilmember Winston. "Atlanta faces challenges with underutilized land and spaces. What is your strategy for accelerating transformative development projects that expand the tax base while ensuring these developments align with community needs?" We'll start with Perrin.
The first part of the process is identifying these lands. On the west side, we have the English Avenue School, which is the perfect opportunity for us to create an economic sort of activity on the west side. It's vacant. It's also an opportunity, it's an opportunity for us to use, to create a mixed development there that will have housing as well as an opportunity for small businesses to sort of create that economic ecosystem on the west side. We have to find more of these projects and we have to use our tools to be able to create more housing projects as well as create opportunities for small businesses in District 3.
Charles?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure thing. "Atlanta faces challenges with underutilized land and spaces. What is your strategy for accelerating transformative development projects that expand the tax base while ensuring these developments align with community needs?"
Yes, thank you, CBA, and for that question. I think when we talk about the west side in 30318, we have more land that is underdeveloped and nearly probably anywhere in the city. And when I think about how to transform and accelerate these business opportunities, I think we need to first look into the investment into our infrastructure. We cannot afford instability in 30318. And currently, there are almost a tale of two cities or a tale of two districts inside of the west side. But I think when we talk about job creation, tax credits, and other things that can happen inside of pushing businesses forward to make sure that they are prioritized is the best way that we can develop working with the city.
Councilmember Winston?
Thank you. So currently, I serve as the Community Development Human Services Committee Chair and with that comes several board appointments. So I'm currently on the Invest Atlanta Board as well as the Atlanta Urban Development Corporation, where we're already doing a lot in terms... where we're already doing a lot in terms of making sure that we're incentivizing developers to be able to add more affordability in terms of their projects, looking at spaces downtown where we're seeing adaptive reuse of underutilized commercial spaces. And on the Urban Development Corporation, where we're actually acting as the real estate arm of the City of Atlanta, where we're moving around the city, we're looking at different places that we can come in and acquire as an aggressive investor in some of those properties throughout the city of Atlanta. So we'll continue doing that work.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Councilman Hillis and Councilman Dozier. Recent policies have prioritized the development of publicly owned land, including Two Peachtree, 143 Alabama, the Midtown Fire Station, and many others. What more should be done to ensure the completion of these critical development projects? We'll start with you, Councilman Hillis.
Thank you. So speaking of what we already have underway in District Nine, we have turned another, a number of public spaces, including the Waterworks Park, which I worked with Upper West Side CID to turn into a park space, a housing complex there. We have finally, after decades, reactivated the Bowen Homes land, the largest vacant public homes parcel in the city of Atlanta. And the first phase of that will result in 150-some units. With, when the final phases are done, there'll be over 1,000 units, and there's much more to go behind that, including Hollywood Courts and the Gun Club Park.
Thank you. Councilman Dozier?
Firstly, I will say that the project that you named, several of them are in my district. I'm proud to have been working alongside our mayor to make sure we can move those projects forward, especially during my service in the Invest Atlanta Board, overseeing several of the inducements for those projects. One of the challenges that a lot of our developers are facing in the city of Atlanta is that there's a lot of red tape. It's very difficult to deliver projects in the city in this environment with tariffs, with high cost of labor. And so making sure we can expedite permits, especially those for projects delivering affordable housing, and making it easier for developers to really unlock the properties that they have. We know that we have several underutilized public projects and working with our partners in Atlanta Forest County Recreation Authority, that we have these huge giant parking lots that can be developed, but partnerships and reducing red tape.
Thank you very much. Next question is for all the candidates, and we'll start with you, Charles. The necessary resources and support services are needed in each district to serve our unsheltered populations. What do you think is the biggest need in your district, and what would you do to bridge that gap?
So currently, I think the biggest need in the district, when we're talking about the unhoused, is to take a moment to invest into those that need it most. Currently, there are many roads, avenues, James Jackson Parkway, Downly Hollowell, that may have seemed to be forgotten about. And understanding how we go a step further, and not only just think about affordable housing, which helps those constituents, but look to economic drivers to put fish, instead of giving a man a fish, we teach a man to fish. And so I think when we talk about how to make that happen, we have to first look at the infrastructure and developing the most disenfranchised parts of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Charles? Councilman Hillis?
So to address homelessness, you also have to address housing. And as was the previous question, we have a number of projects already underway in District Nine. Another item that I have been vigilant on is the Justice Policy Board. I co-chair that with Fulton County Superior Court Judge Robert McBurney, where we have opened the first collaboration between the city and the counties, the Diversion Center downtown. And to get that fully activated like we need to, we have to request all of our cities in Fulton County, as well as the county police force, to use that space. And as well, to use that space and as we bring those to get services they need.
Thank you. Perrin?
To address the homelessness issue in District Three, we need to do a few things. First, we need to invest more in housing-first initiatives. We also need to eliminate barriers that make it harder for our neighbors to get access to the resources that are available. We also need to invest more in PAD and also mental health resources. But we also need to partner with our nonprofit developers that are working with a mission to provide care to our unhoused. But we also need to streamline our city process, making it easier for developers to access permitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Councilman Winston?
Thank you. I was proud to sponsor the city of Atlanta's largest investment in addressing homelessness throughout the city of Atlanta, over $70 million, thanks to the unanimous support of my colleagues on council. We'll continue expanding upon these projects. We're investing in partners like Partners for Home, where we have a case management program specifically in my district, where we have a person that goes out every day, that's out trying to build relationship with our unhoused community. There's projects like this that we can expand throughout the city of Atlanta into other districts, as well as I know that we have several rapid rehousing projects throughout the city of Atlanta, that we're seeing the work, we're seeing people getting off the street, we're seeing how supportive and mental health services are really helping to address this crisis.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dozier?
I agree with my colleague, Councilman Winston. Housing, housing, housing. I'm proud that two of our first three rapid housing products were being delivered in my district just last week. We broke ground on Cooper Street, which is going to deliver 100 units of supportive housing to our unsheltered population. I think a lot about the fact that people in my district, Weston, for example, 5,000 people live in Weston today, 1970 census, we had 20,000 residents in that neighborhood. We have a lot of room for growth, a lot of room for housing. And as a city, we've not done a great job of getting more housing units online. Housing choice is important, and everybody wants to live in a 300-unit multifamily building in Midtown, and everybody wants to live in a single-family home. So making sure there's a diversity of housing opportunities for everyone will help us reduce the crunch on housing that everyone's experiencing, including our most marginal people.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Councilman Winston, Perrin Bostic, and Councilman Dozier. Community improvement districts, or CIDs, play a vital role in advancing local initiatives and speeding up capital projects in our city. If elected, how do you plan to collaborate with the CIDs in your district to support and implement effective solutions? Start with Councilman Winston.
Thank you. I've really got to see the work that CIDs have really been able to do around the city of Atlanta. We don't currently have one in my district, but we're working with several business associations to try to get one on board in District One. Right now, we know that, you know, it's no secret that we've had some issues with capital delivery in terms of making sure we get projects and shovels in the ground throughout the city of Atlanta. But we've been able to supplement that with our CID, seeing some of the work. I see some of the ones in Councilmember Dozier's district on the west side, and seeing how they are able to jumpstart a lot of projects that we've had issues being able to get started. But I'm excited that we have new leadership within ATLDOT, we have a new COO, where we're starting to see progress in being able to get some of these projects jumpstarted.
Thank you very much. Perrin?
So I've had the opportunity as a staffer for Senator Warnock to work with many different CIDs around the northwest part of our state. So I know how valuable they are to our communities and how helpful they are in terms of unlocking the different projects that we have, whether they're infrastructure or transportation-related. These are very key groups that we need to further support. And as a city councilman, I will be at the table with them, partnering to make sure that we're doing everything we can to move the projects forward in our neighborhoods.
Councilman Dozier?
So I've already been doing a lot of this work. I serve on both the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District Board, as well as the Weston CID Board in downtown Atlanta. We've been able to deliver on several transportation projects, including 2023's, one of the best bike lanes in the country, the MLK Cycle Track. Over in Weston, we did some design work with O'Toole and worked with GDOT to redesign Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, which GDOT's going to deliver next year. So we're already doing that work, and I'm really excited that District Four is going to include a big chunk of Midtown, so I'll get to work with Kevin and the Midtown CID folks with Midtown Alliance and really take some of the lessons learned from my time while I was working in southwest Atlanta and bringing it further north down Peachtree Street as well.
Thank you. Next, we have District Nine's specific question for Charles and Councilman Hillis. Grove Park and the Donald Lee Hollowell Corridor are seeing or anticipating new construction. How can the city preserve existing affordable housing and prevent displacement in this area? Charles, I'll start with you.
Thomas, thank you for that question. I think that that may be the most important question in District Nine's current standpoint. The way that we do this is that we think of who these residents are, and we put together programs that may need to be innovative into how the city is currently looking to support these residents. This is maybe something like a legacy district that is not just a tad district, but it's something that is going to implement ways to support those residents that have toiled and broken the sweat and put in the long years to finally get the value out of their home. Because that is how we keep people into their homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Thank you for that question. So that has been an issue for many years in District Nine. In my first term, we opened West Side Park. Before that, we created the West Side Park Overlay. Now there's, I've introduced legislation to rename that overlay because it's no longer West Side Park. We have renamed that park after Mayor Shirley Clark Franklin, because that park will not exist after her. And not just renaming that overlay, but also expanding it to cover more areas as the Proctor Creek Trail extends to the river. And another thing is we need to fully implement and enforce the light tax to get slum lords out of our neighborhoods, so these houses can be owned by people who live there and take care of their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Our final question is the same as previous panels. What is the primary issue facing your district, and why are you the candidate to address it? You'll have 60 seconds for this, and let's start with Councilman Winston, please.
Thank you. I think the biggest issue that we have is still housing affordability. You know, we're seeing the rising costs of rents, the challenges of being able to get homes. I understand what this is like. My family, actually, my wife and I got a down payment assistance loan from Invest Atlanta. And I got to see what that meant for my life from a generational standpoint. Now my two girls don't have to worry about where they can lay their heads at night. And so I want to make sure that other families have the same opportunity. I know what it meant for me personally, and I know that the city can continue to invest in affordable housing. We're seeing that. We're on track to get, I think, over 10,000 over in the next year, over the last three years that we've been on council. And so I know we'll be able to continue that work, dealing with our partners at Invest Atlanta, seeing what the tax allocation districts, where we've been able to expand a lot of the incentives to bring on new units across the city of Atlanta. So I'll continue that work as a councilmember in District One, and I know that that's work that we can do throughout the city of Atlanta.
Thank you. Perrin?
Thank you for the question. I believe social mobility is part of the, one of the biggest issues in District Three, and that encompasses a few different things. We have a lot of infrastructure challenges. We have a lot of streets that are still unpaved. A lot of neighborhoods in my district don't have access to sidewalks, which you know are extremely important in terms of creating healthy neighborhoods, but also displacement. That is a huge issue in my district. Many people feel that the growth that is happening on the west side is not necessarily something that's for them. They're afraid that they're going to lose their homes and the very communities that they grew up in. And so these are challenges that I'm interested in addressing as a city councilman, and we'll make sure that the folks of our neighborhood and my district feel safe by getting their streets repaired, and then also making sure that they have access to resources to keep them home as the growth continues to appear on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dozier?
Well firstly, I'll say I'll agree with my colleague, Councilman Winston. Housing is the number one issue facing my district, and I think facing the city, and honestly, facing this country. But I will just add that transportation is also an important issue facing many people in my district. When we think about where most of the fatalities or pedestrian injuries are happening, they're in southwest Atlantic communities like the ones that I represent. And a lot of my district doesn't have the infrastructure that people need to get around safely, don't have crosswalks or sidewalks, the rapid flashing beacons that we love and adore in downtown and midtown, have a population that rely on public transportation, but a lot of our martyr bus stops are just a pull in the dirt. And so it's a very unsafe and undignified experience, especially when you have inclement weather. And so reversing that trend, making sure people can get around safely, and making sure people can get around in a way that makes them feel like our city cares about us, is something that has been a big thing that I've been focused on since I've been in office. I've been hit by a car. I've had to go to Grady. I don't want anybody else to have to experience that same sort of pain. And I want my daughters to play in the street the same way all of us fight, play in the street when we were growing up, and it's a big part of why I fight for the things that I fight for. So transportation, I think, in addition to housing, is one of the most important things facing our city as well.
Thank you. Councilman Hillis?
Thank you. I'm going to start with the overarching term of infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Because we cannot support all the other things that the city needs, including affordable housing, if we do not have the infrastructure to support it. I'll start with ATLDOT. I am very proud to say, and sorry to my colleagues here, they actually weren't on the council at the time, but I advocated hard when it came to moving Atlanta forward, and District Nine got more moving Atlanta forward money than any other council district. Well, that's great. The legislature has done its job. It is up now to ATLDOT to deliver on those projects. I've been working hard with Mayor Dickens to get those projects out the door. We've been successful, but there is more work to do. Another city department is watershed. They have been focused so long on sewer and the consent decree that they have not focused on the typical day-to-day, as well as the water side, the stormwater side. So I will work, going to be working hard next term to get a stormwater utility and to renew not only our sewers, but our water distribution system and our water treatment centers.
Thank you. Charles?
Instability in 30318. And that looks like infrastructure, zoning, economic drivers. But why is this? Mainly because this is a reflection of our servant leadership. And currently, servant leaders are supposed to serve those that have the most needs, not only serve those with the least at stake. And so when we think about what we're talking about, we are discussing rebuilding our crumbling infrastructure so that business leaders in Atlanta will join me in investing and creating opportunities in 30318 to transform Northwest Atlanta. Because no matter how many times we rename the Bankhead Corridor, it is still the future and promise of Atlanta. Everyone will tell you, housing, affordable housing, they'll say roads. But I've lived in the district, and there are roads that have 75 potholes that have been there for nearly a decade. So the question that I ask you is, who benefits most by not addressing these issues? I say that to simply say, I'm here to build bridges, to transform communities, and to unite the people who most need it and do not have a voice. My name is Charles Boujoua, and I'm running for Atlanta City Council in District Nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candidates, thank you very much. Everybody, please give them a round of applause for participating today and in this process. So candidates for the fourth panel are going to be leaving the stage, and we're going to welcome our final panel momentarily, but we'll pause. Last panel of candidates for our morning forum and we have candidates for City Council Districts Five, Six, and Seven. Candidates, I'm going to ask you to very briefly introduce yourselves. We're going to limit you to 30 seconds each. As you can see, and the audience can also see, we have a shot clock to help you end on time. The numbers will turn yellow at 10 seconds and red at 5 seconds and if you go much longer after that, I will ask you to please finish your thought. As far as our format, I'm going to ask a question and a few candidates will have a chance to answer it. We will switch up the order each time. The last question will go to all of the candidates. This forum is not a debate and there will not be opportunities to ask other candidates questions or rebuttals. So candidates, please take 30 seconds to introduce yourself. Councilmember Bakhtiari, we will start with you. That's the way it goes.
You've got to restart the clock. I didn't go yet, Thomas.
Oh, well, there we go.
Hi, everybody. I'm Liliana Bakhtiari. I'm the council member for District Five. I am the shy one without opinion. That's not honest. And I, things I focused on during my tenure, my entire background is in crisis relief work. This is my first term. Managed to accomplish a lot around infrastructure, scaling up homelessness services. By the end of my term, we will have built more than six permanent supportive housing unit, buildings in my district as well as, as well as getting a million dollar contribution to green spaces in the district and big focuses have been sustainability and had over, legislated over 600 pieces of legislation and I hope to serve another four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Juan?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Alex Juan. I'm the council member for City Council District Six. I'm a Georgia Tech grad, have an MBA from Wharton Business School, currently serving as Assistant Vice President of Community Affairs at Emory University. I am in my third term as council member. I've been blessed with the opportunity for unexpected second tour of duty, but I've also served on the boards of the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'm currently on the ATL Regional Transit Link Authority Board. Fun fact, I am a beekeeper, so I look forward to the conversation today.
Jamie?
First, let me say thank you to the CBA for giving me the opportunity to participate in this forum today. My name is Jamie Christie and I'm running for Atlanta City Council District Seven. I was born and raised in Buckhead and graduated from the Westminster Schools. I'm a lawyer in a mid-sized law firm in Midtown, the former Buckhead Public Safety Investigator and a homeowner in District Seven. I believe that my roots in Buckhead, as well as my legal experience, makes me the well-qualified candidate to be the next councilman for District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thad?
Thank you to the CBA for having this forum and everyone for coming and watching online. I am Thad Flowers. I am an Atlanta native and a longtime Buckhead resident. I've been in Buckhead most of my life. Sarah Smith Elementary, Sutton Middle, Boy Scouts, of course, like Alex, Georgia Tech MBA, all of those things. I've been in the district. I love it. It is my home. I am committed to serving people and improving efficiency. That has been the through line of my entire life, both professionally and personally, and I look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Rebecca?
Hello, I'm Rebecca King. I've been a Buckhead resident since 2007. I've served on many community organizations and boards and so I decided to run so that I could improve quality of life in Buckhead and continue the work that I've done as the past Chair of MPUB, the Buckhead Council, the Buckhead Condominium Association President, as well as the past Vice President of the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board and several other boards. I have a degree in education from the University of South Alabama. I have a 14-year-old that will be attending North Atlanta High School this year.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thomas?
Good morning. My name's Thomas Worthy, candidate for District Seven. I am a Carrollton, Georgia native, but I've been in Buckhead for about 15 years now. I'm running because I believe we need leaders that are innovative problem solvers who are committed to radical pragmatism. They need to be responsive, they need to be effective communicators, and they need to have optimism and vision for Atlanta. I'm a lawyer by training. I'm an executive at Piedmont Healthcare, which is one of the largest employers in the city. I am a husband, which teaches you compromise, and a father, which teaches you debate. And I think that these characteristics would give me the background and innovative approach to be a good council member.
Thank you. The first question is for Councilman Juan, Thad Flowers, and Councilwoman Bakhtiari. The city has committed over $3.5 billion in infrastructure spending, infrastructure funding through programs such as Moving Atlanta Forward, TSPLOST, resurfacing improvements, and the MORE MARTA program. What would you do if elected to ensure these major taxpayer-funded projects are delivered successfully, transparently, and on time? Councilman Juan, we'll start with you.
Thanks for the question, Thomas. I think that my focus has, it will continue to be on making sure that we have the funding, we're being good stewards of the funding, that we're not wasting that and that we're actually still maintaining and dedicating to the projects we promised the public. Second is around staffing and making sure that we have the talent internally at the city to manage and deliver those products, projects. And the third one is a strategy, a plan and a strategy to deploy. If it's hiring outside contractors, design, build, if it is leveraging our own internal staff, if it's partnering with the Georgia Department of Transportation, but all three of those things I've been focused on since coming back on council and I'll continue to do it in my next term.
Thank you. Thad?
You know, that is one of the areas where I have focused on in the past few years. I worked for Atkins Realist, we're in their DOT vertical, so we handle a lot of the capital projects for the city. First thing you could do as a council member is kind of in that legislative oversight role, asking the right questions and make sure the projects stay on track and are delivered on time. You can also lean in in terms of bringing in the right, bringing in, oh, well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Thank you. I think that Councilman Juan nailed a lot of it. I would also agree, our staffing issues. We are trying to get a lot of money out the door and it would be disingenuous for me to say that we've done that effectively. We haven't. So there needs to be massive improvements there. It is a very dangerous thing for people to lose faith in the process and lose faith in their taxpayer dollars going to what they intended them to. Staffing, absolutely, talent. We have to take a look at how we can better compete with the private market because we are losing people. And I would also say not treating everything as urgent. Right now ATL DOT is tasked with everything as urgent and we have to be prioritizing on arterial roads instead of doing one offices, side streets. That's how you get comprehensive changes throughout a city.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Jamie and Rebecca. Coordination and a productive relationship between the mayor, council president, and city council is critical for moving Atlanta forward. If elected, how do you plan to work with this current council and the mayor to continue advancing the city? And let's start with Jamie.
Yes, so I believe that consistent and quality communication is the best way to coordinate with the council and the mayor because all of us, if I am elected, are busy individuals serving the city and its constituents. I also believe that we need to work to create a strong relationship with the mayor's office because sometimes it feels that sometimes the mayor is off on his own path instead of working with city council, especially District Seven.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I would continue the work that I've been doing already as the Neighborhood Planning Unit B Chair. I reached out to the council members. I also reached out to the mayoral office if there's anything that needs to be done and keeping an open line of communication, looking to the business community to help facilitate those conversations and being transparent with the activities that are happening so that everyone knows what's going on. When you're more informed, it's easier to move those projects forward and having priorities, using a reserve study to see what is most important at the moment and what can be worked on in the future.
Thank you. Next question is for councilmembers Juan and Bakhtiari and Thomas Worthy. Atlanta's aging infrastructure, including its water and sewer systems, viaducts and bridges, require significant investment with more needed than the identified resources. What do you see as the council's role in prioritizing needs and securing the resources needed to be successful in executing? Start with Thomas.
Yes, I believe that it's very important in that, in that topic for the council to be proactive and not reactive. Obviously, the council can be a strategic driver of sustainable and equitable water and sewer infrastructure through not only their legislative role, a suitor's review of what ordinances need to be updated, but also through their funding authority and their oversight authority. So I think the council really needs to step up and be proactive instead of reactive on that topic.
Councilmember Juan?
I think that folks would be surprised if they saw the watershed management budget every year, that we actually do have a lot of resources in that department through sales tax rates as well as investments from the federal government. The trick is actually prioritizing where we spend it and making sure that we are very disciplined about spending every year versus waiting until we have a water main break and then all of a sudden everything is more expensive. So, you know, my goal is to continue leaning into the prioritization, the plan, and the roadmap that we are laying out so that we are addressing the critical issues first and then coming back and taking care of just the maintenance stuff later.
Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Yeah, thank you. I think that Atlanta is the third landlocked city to be formed in the country. In many ways, we were formed completely by accident. We're very reactive. So the other issue is like, we plan for the breakages that happen each year, not for replacement. We saw that with the breakage earlier this year or last year because time is all running. And we saw that we were not stocked up on proper materials. We were not prepared. Now, the Army Corps of Engineers and what we have worked with them to do, our replacement plan used to be 500 years. We have gotten that down significantly lower to under 100. I say that because they say 20 years. I don't quite believe that, but I do believe that we've gotten to under 100. And the fact of the matter is, we get more rainfall than Seattle and other locations and it comes in the form of flash floods. So this has to be a massive priority moving forward.
Thank you very much. Next question is for the District Seven candidates. We'll start with Rebecca. What policies would you introduce to address neighborhood traffic congestion while supporting Buckhead's role as a major employment center?
We need to still invest in our public transportation, studies that are already occurring in terms of the lights and utilizing those to the most efficiency. The roundabout is coming in Buckhead and District Seven, so that's another opportunity. Working to make sure that we provide efficient MARTA service so that people will want to ride that. If you're stuck in a red light and looking at the bus next to you, it doesn't make you want to get on the bus. So we need to keep working on that, having clean MARTA transportation and making sure that people have interest in it by using also part of it with, through the education system. I feel like our students could be using it with safety.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thad?
Yes, traffic in District Seven. First of all, lean into, lean into major capital projects, like even working with the Buckhead CID. Like Rebecca said, they had the Waikiki Road Roundabout, the Piedmont Road Improvement Project, even down to small things like synchronizing the traffic lights so P3 Piedmont and Lennox do not become bottlenecks every day at rush hour. Also lean on our partners. We have livable Buckhead. We have the buck that you can use. It is like community Uber. They will come and pick you up. There are a lot of things that we can do in the district to ease our traffic burden, ease the congestion. Some of them are quick fixes, kind of like synchronizing the lights, but then the other thing we need to do for the long things that will take time, that will take lots of money and will be dirty and inconvenient, is just have the stick-to-itiveness to see them all the way through to the end.
Thank you very much. Thomas?
Yes, I've had the very good fortune to serve on the MARTA Board of Directors for the past nine years and I've been exposed to a lot of transportation alternatives that we all would have thought were from out of space just a few years ago. Things like autonomous people movers, all of those are real. I think the number one thing that we could do to reduce congestion in District Seven in the short term is to continue to work with the CID to try to connect all of those paths that they have worked very hard on to the Belt Line and really working to use the power of the office to secure and chase that federal funding that could do so.
Thank you. Jamie?
I think we need to recognize that a lot of traffic comes from people who don't necessarily live in Buckhead. People commute in to work in Buckhead. And one way that District Seven can work with the city to alleviate these traffic concerns and burdens is to continue the partnership with MARTA. In fact, on June 12th, MARTA announced this next-gen bus program, which does create streamlined routes and consistent bus routes and time to reach other places such as District Seven and other people's work.
Thank you. Fifth question is for District Seven candidates, Thomas Worthy and Rebecca King and also Councilmember Bakhtiari. The MORE MARTA program and bus network redesign are critical for Atlanta's transit future. How will you improve city MARTA collaboration to ensure the successful execution of these initiatives? And we'll start with Thomas.
Yes, I couldn't agree more that the collaboration with the city as one of the largest jurisdictions in the MARTA footprint is vitally important. I think that I bring a unique perspective to that, to this race, because I know all of the actors in the C team at MARTA and I would do everything in my power to use the power of convening to collaborate better between the city and the MARTA C team.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Continued collaboration. It's not only the city, it's APS. I think there's an opportunity to start young people using transportation early. If it's safe, we're about to be on the world stage and many of you, I'm sure, have traveled and used other international cities' transportation, not only domestically. We have to show we're using it. If you have your MARTA card, if you're using the buck, you need to use it and that way you have the opportunity to show how it works and if it's working or not. Having clean stations so that people can step off and use those and not battle for a seat would be a good start as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Mr. Worthy, would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. The MORE MARTA program and bus network redesign are critical for Atlanta's transit future. How will you improve city MARTA collaboration to ensure the successful execution of these initiatives?
First and foremost, there has to be a more constructive relationship between the city and MARTA. I think right now we're seeing, I'm just going to call it out, a level of hostility that is not productive. And so the only conversations that are taking place with council and MARTA in a majority of spaces is in that, is in that transportation committee. That is not effective. So there has to be more collaborative relationship because what's falling by the wayside is the moving forward to projects. We're arguing over where projects should go, how they should be constructed, if we should do investigations versus not. So these all have to be, these all have to, we have to have honest conversations that are productive. And we also have to talk about the bus redesign network being taken away from senior locations where we've actually built the infrastructure for buses to be there. I know that they're getting, a lot of those lines are being cut in my district and I'll be continuing to fight back against that, but in a constructive and productive way.
Thank you. Next question is for Thad, Jamie, and Councilmember Juan. Atlanta now possesses a state-of-the-art training center for police officers and firefighters yet staffing levels remain below target. What policies would you propose to help meet recruitment and retention goals? Let's begin with you, Thad.
Yeah, the first thing that we have, the training center is great. We have, the city of Atlanta has the largest and best trained force in the entire state of Georgia, but there are a couple of things that we could do in terms of retention is to keep them from fleeing to other places. Make sure they have all the equipment they need. In District Seven, we need a permanent home for our zone too. We need more take-home cars so that they can get back and forth to work and also that would keep us safer. There are a lot of things, sorry.
You can finish your thought.
Okay. There are other things that we could do in terms of building partnerships with, between the partnerships between the city and other communities that will allow, for instance, like livable Buckhead has a program so to subsidize the rent so they can live within the community. And all of those is a benefits package that would keep them to stay.
Thank you, Thad. Thank you very much. Jamie?
So I would take a little bit of a different approach. We would also retain talent by providing apartments and subsidized apartments in District Seven so the officers that do work in District Seven can live in the district. But as well, we need to start younger. We need to start in colleges. So I would create programs and internships in the state university system to recruit promising talent. And these programs would allow college students to intern with Atlanta Police Department in the summer in their respective fields such as detective or B cop. If the student completes the program and the internship, they would be guaranteed a job with the Atlanta Police Department.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Juan?
So I'm pleased and proud to be on a council that has done a lot, taken a lot of actions this term to try and support the staffing level at APD, including enhancements to the pension, which we heard a lot of officers that were, especially middle-level officers, that was a big deciding factor. Salary. Salary with the class and comp study, as well as incentives like take-home cars and housing. But I think what we really need to do is start improving the relationship that our police force and our public safety officers have with the public. I would not want to be a police officer right now because of the hostility that a lot of communities exhibit towards our public safety folks. And I feel like this chief has done a great job, and we just need to continue supporting the effort that he has and the majors have in building that relationship.
Thank you very much. Our final question goes to all the candidates, and you have 60 seconds to answer this one. What is the primary issue facing your district, and why are you the candidate to address it? Councilmember Bakhtiari, start with you.
I actually think the primary, besides, I think the primary obstacle I face in my district is apathy. I think a lot of us face that. I think a lot of people have lost faith in the process. I think that the human, I think that the human mind and body are not evolved enough to maybe be exposed to a level of stress and information that we are exposed to every single day. I think hyper-localism is more important now in this political climate than ever before, because that's where we can affect the most change. I have championed sustainability policy. We have the highest reflectivity standards now in the country. I have scaled up a case manager program that has housing a person every 19 days currently in East Atlanta, that we've just scaled up to Sweet Auburn, to Little Five, to parts of Councilwoman Juan's district, to Kirkwood. That has taken off and been highly successful. I've worked to retain more code enforcement officers. I've given a million dollars to green spaces in the district, and we've just cleared more than 10 infrastructure projects out, many of which will break ground this summer, including Jackson Street Bridge. And my biggest focus is going to, one of my biggest focuses this next four years, data transparency, finding out low-hanging fruit where we can actually raise costs for better efficiency, so we take pressure off of our taxpayers, and a lot more that I do not have time to say now. But I love this district. I pride myself on accessibility. And District 5, in my opinion, is the most active district in the city with the highest voter turnout, and I believe I am uniquely situated to represent my community.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Juan?
So I represent a district that has an embarrassment of riches in terms of investment in housing, investment in commercial projects. There's just a lot of activity. So I think the biggest thing focused, we're facing right now is infrastructure, both water as well as transportation. And the good news is that we've got funding committed to it through More Marta, through Renew Atlanta, Moving Atlanta Forward, through federal funds that have come in. And we've got projects on deck like Clifton Corridor, Monroe, Safe Streets, North Highland. We just have to execute, and we have to do it in a way before the crush comes with the additional population and strain. I'll just continue to what I've been doing, focusing on the budget, making sure that we are preserving the funds that we committed to it, and then making sure that we internally and externally have the resources to deliver and execute those projects. And then finally, that we're sticking to, that we have a plan and that we're sticking to it. I've been very vocal about it at all the committee meetings and full council meetings, and I look forward to continuing to be that voice.
Thank you. Jamie?
So the hard-pressing issues in District 7, since there are multiple issues, the main three are infrastructure, traffic, and crime. I believe I'm the best candidate to create solutions for my district's issues, thanks to my previous experience as the Buckhead Public Safety Investigator, working with the Atlanta Police in Zone 2, and my mediating skill set in my current profession as a lawyer. My strengths lie in being responsive, listening to others in order to distill issues and resolve them effectively, while also working collaboratively, which is key to communicating with my fellow councilmen and mayor while serving as the best advocate for District 7. Additionally, I'm a lifelong competitive athlete and am no stranger to hard work and dedication. I'm willing and able to put in the necessary time and energy to furthering District 7 and taking it from not just good, but to great, and also taking the city from good to great as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thad?
There's not just one issue. When I'm out talking to regular, everyday residents in the district, the top three things, of course, traffic and transportation, infrastructure, public safety, of course, the things that we talked about previously in terms of helping, supporting our officers, but also the quality of life things like homelessness and the unsheltered population. And then, of course, zoning and development. We, you know, the district, we have to make sure that our commercial corridors have what they need to continue to grow smartly and grow up. And we can also, at the same time, protect our established canopy neighborhoods. You can do both. It's not an either-or. It is a yes-and. Why am I the best person? Because I've been doing this work the whole time. I used to be Chief of Staff or Atlanta City Councilmember, so I know exactly what the job is. I know what the job takes. I know how to write legislation and to build a consensus to get it through and to keep the city moving and going. I have 12, 13 years of private sector experience, so I bring that entrepreneurial mindset to the role of local government. And of course, most recently, I've actually been working on those projects. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yes, it's a continuation of the work. In District 7, it's quality of life, crime, traffic, unsheltered homelessness. It's a situation that has made Buckhead maybe less appealing than it used to be, and it needs to be addressed. We're stepping on the world stage, and we need to be polished and foot-forward. We need to be the best we can be. We also can't argue with the South Side, the North Side, the East Side, the West Side. Who gets what? It needs to be a combined effort, and I have built those relationships through the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board and have worked with people to understand that we do have some of the similar situations. And so working together, we can advance one side and then move to the next side, if that's the case. You don't take a child that's ready to the Olympics and pull them out and give the money to somebody else that you might hope you can condition up to win. So I would say that we need, as the best person and the candidate, that we need to work where we are, shovel-ready, and then use those templates and those situations and be organized and move them to other parts of the city.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thomas?
I agree with every other candidate for District 7 on the issues facing the district. I want to focus on two. Number one, I think transportation and congestion, but I also think we've answered a lot of that in previous questions. I also want to remind everyone that the current District 7 does not look like the legacy District 7. And I think one of the biggest problems facing the Lindbergh area of the district is the unsheltered population and the perception of lack of safety because of the unsheltered population over there. Supportive housing, affordable housing, is a really hard issue with not one clear-cut solution, but it is not impossible. I would start by convening experts like City for All and Urban Land Institute, along with government actors like Housing Atlanta, as well as the thriving business community in Buckhead, to try to collaborate to find issues to that. I've had the good fortune of being a staffer in all three branches of government over the course of my professional career, and I know the good that can come with government when collaboration and bipartisan solutions are reached.
Thank you very much, Thomas. And that concludes our final panel. Please, everyone, again, give the candidates a round of applause. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for participating. A special thank you to everyone who tuned in via YouTube livestream. We're very glad you could join us. Thank you for that. A full video of today's forum will be available on CBA's website at cbatl.org. Be sure to check that out, along with a lot of other CBA resources. Don't forget to follow CBA on LinkedIn, Twitter, and update some more valuable content. It's been my pleasure to be your moderator today. Thank you very much. Subscribe to Axios Atlanta. Thanks for watching. Enjoy the rest of the day.